Good evening all. Once we have everyone here, I will bring you into the room. Okay, councilman, I'm gonna start bringing you in one at a time. Councilman Brzezinski, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
He's talking to you.
Hello there, what?
So that echo is you having yours?
We got two phones going.
Just testing my speaker here, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Dave. Ed, you're upside down.
I'm upside down?
No, Dave, you're okay. Ed's upside down. You see Ed's upside down?
Ed, flip your computer around. I'm kidding.
I love these things, guys, you know that?
Love technology, right, Ed?
Oh, my goodness.
I can hear and see you now.
Okay.
Right side up.
I'll be darned. Is Debbie there with us yet?
Yes, she's here.
Okay, so if we have time, there you are. If everybody's hooked up, we can do it, huh? Is she ready to present?
I have Councilman Wunarski through my phone.
And did you let Veronica Fields and Dave Dieter were also going to be on this call?
Oh, did you tell Frank this?
Yes, I see Veronica. I do see Veronica.
Okay.
Deb, Dave is not on yet.
Okay, well, I mean, is it five? Well, I guess whenever you're ready to start, we can start.
Go ahead, my dear. Looking good.
Thank you. Okay, actually, you should have all received. First, I'll say good evening. Actually, all the councilmen and as well as everyone that's on this call should have received some correspondence. There should have been a fiscal year 2021 proposed CDBG funding list as well as a description of the projects. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review some of the projects, but what I've proposed to do is kind of look, if you want to look at the sheet that says 2021 proposed CDBG funding, and we can kind of go down there, down the list of what our proposed funding is going to be. So if everyone has that sheet, I'll start now. All right, so on the first page, last year, our office received $3,172,095. So we're using that number as a base. We do not know exactly what we're going to receive for this fiscal year. We also have program income of $8,818.72. We have reprogramming dollars of $829,886.32. And so our base budget is $4,010,804. On the next sheet is actually the list of all of the proposed city projects that we propose to fund for CD fiscal year 2021. There are curb cuts, tree removal and planning, demolition, code enforcement, summer rec programs, street improvements, park and playgrounds, Department of Economic and Community Development Administration, City of Erie Commercial Facade, curb cut streets, this is a RAPi grant which matches provided by the CDBG program. And so the proposed number there is $2,431,360.4. Are there any questions on any of the City of Erie proposed projects? Okay, I'll move to the next sheet. Which are the redevelopment authority projects. This year, they are requesting housing rehabilitation, $200,000. Housing rehab lead, which is $75,000. The redevelopment authority received a lead hazard match grant, and so the $75,000 is actually match funding that our office has proposed to give them, give to them for the next three years. The ERA Housing Services is actually professional services that they are providing to Department of Economic and Community Development for our home investment partnership program. So they go out and they look at the house and they do the risk assessment and all the other things to get the house, an inspection for the house to see what the cost may be. And so that's what the $20,000 is. This year, we also, are there any questions on ERA projects for housing rehab or for lead?
Deb, I have a question. I know this has been a program for many years. How long has the lead rehabilitation been going on?
Well, they asked, the redevelopment authority actually finished a lead grant that was, I think, for three years prior. So Kathy, I'm not real sure. I think this is going into the fourth year, I want to say, but it may be more. I can actually find out for you.
Yeah, I was wondering if they have like an estimation of how many more houses they need to, you know, redo. My girlfriend had hers done way back when, several years back. And I wonder what the projected numbers are as to how many houses still need to have their lead taken out.
Michelle, I believe, I don't know if it was in conjunction with the redevelopment authority, but GCAC had, was one of the big sponsors and a grant awardee lead abatement in this area, probably going back to the years you're talking about. So I don't know if there's been a transition or if this is still in conjunction with what they do also.
Kathy, I can actually find out for you. I'll reach out to Aaron and get some numbers for you on that.
Thanks. I was, you know, I'm just concerned, you know, to make sure that everyone gets the lead out, so.
You know, I don't know any numbers either, but I think there's a lot more than the money that they've got. I mean, there's a lot, lot more that needs to be done.
Yeah, I could picture there being many, many thousands of houses that are covered by other paint. And it may not be dangerous if it's covered and they don't have young children, I guess, or pets.
That's okay. I'll reach out to Aaron and I'll get that information for you.
Thank you.
Sure. We also received some applications for housing program. One was submitted for Methodist Towers. We thought it would probably best fit under our home program. And then there was one that was submitted from, for GCAC. And so for GCAC, there's still some things that we actually need to, you know, find out about the program and get some more information on that. So we did not put any funding in for those two programs. On the next sheet, which is our public service program, we have our, excuse me, our public service activities, JFK, BTW, MLK, Trinity Center, Boys and Girls Club. This year, actually, Boys and Girls Club is going to be partnering with Police Athletic League. And so they will actually have a year-long program. BTW, Human Resources, MLK, JFK, GCAC In-Home Services, Trinity Center, Human Resources, Multicultural Center, St. Martin Center, Urban Erie Community Development Corporation, the YMCA, the Youth Leadership Institute, the Erie City Mission, Erie Focus Citizens Response is a new program this year, and that is actually out of the Citizens Response office that currently works at City Hall, Marsela's office. And so we will be partnering with him as far as like the different calls and different things that he does in his office. Erie Downtown Improvement District submitted an application. We're still doing some research on that. So right now, there is not any funding that is listed there, as well as Journey to a Trauma Free Informed Life, which is counseling for individuals who may have stressed or may be going through some mental situations. So we're still looking at information on that agency. And so for our public service total, it's listed at 639440, but when you add the city summer rec to it, it's $649,440. Are there any questions on the public service activities? The next page has economic development. This is a project that Erie County Redevelopment Authority will be doing with Berry Plastics. They're looking to build a warehouse which would retain, I believe it's 180 something jobs, and also create, I believe it's 15. Cannon University, we funded them last year, as well as Paramount Pursuit, Manus Enterprises. And this year, we have Kiva listed. And I believe you probably got information on Kiva before. It's also listed on the sheet that I actually gave to you. So these are some economic development activities that our office is looking to fund. The total there, the proposed number there is $645,000. So the total for all of the projects is $4,010,804. And so those are the activities for CDBG.
Deborah?
Yes?
What are the, what's Paramount Pursuits?
It's a mentoring program. If you look on the sheet, it's for agencies who, I'm sorry, not agencies, individuals who are looking to start a business, get some mentoring on how to start a business. It could also be to help them write a business plan. It's actually new entrepreneurs who are looking to come out and start a business and not necessarily know what to do. So they take, Paramount Pursuit takes them through various stages of what they would knew, what they would need to do to start their own business. It's pretty much like a mentoring program.
So Deb, the only new ones that are new from any previous years is Citizen Response Erie Downtown Improvement District and Journey to a Trauma Free Informed Life.
Correct. And so, as I mentioned, Citizens Response, that is actually Marsela's office. He'll be taking calls on whatever the people call in for. It could be trash, it could be garbage, it could be blighted properties, different information on that. And he'll keep records of all that information, and we'll actually kind of look at that information and review it as it comes in and see, you know, maybe where their blighted properties are, where there could be some demolition and different things like that to be done. As far as Erie Downtown Improvement District, which is a new application, we are still looking at that because right now, based on the information that was submitted, we're not sure if it would be an eligible activity, because what they were looking to do is do some third-party contracting, and that's not an eligible activity for CDBG.
Deb, back to the Marsala one, it sounds like, so he's been taking complaints for a number of years, but now the idea is that you don't just solve the individual complaint, but you figure out how your office and the rest of the city could respond maybe in a more, I don't know if global is the right word, or more focused response is the impression I get then, right? So you'll be generating, you'll be generating the data, and then it'll be, okay. Now, how do we go beyond just solving one person's problem, but maybe a wider view?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Journey to a Trauma Free Informed Life is a new application. And we still have to do some research on that to see if that is something that we would be able to pay for. They're looking to provide informed mental health outpatient counseling to uninsured, low, moderate income, and vulnerable populations on a walk-in basis. So we have to actually get more information on that to see if that would be something that we would be able to fund. It is a for-profit agency, so there's just certain information. We have to make sure that it would be something eligible. Are there any other questions on the public service activities?
Deb, for the summer rec programs, are they going to be operated pretty much the same way they were last year?
Um, well, I think a lot of the agencies, what they did, they came in with both options. Some came in with a virtual one, as well as if it's something that they could do in person. So they're actually kind of looking at, you know, both ways. If COVID is still, you know, a big issue, they may do virtual. If not, then they will do in-person. So they're, you know, they're actually, you know, thinking ahead and thinking of, okay, if we can't do in-person, then we would do virtually.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Michael Keys. Not necessarily about today's, but did, I know with COVID, there was a lot of people not prepared for, you know, not being able to do their summer rec programs or anything. My question was, was, or was everything able to be executed, or did agencies who could not execute return the money?
There was, most of the agencies did go ahead and do their program. There was one agency who did not do their program because they were not prepared to do it, you know, with the social distancing and only a certain amount of children. So one agency was not able to actually do their program. Some of the programs did not expend all of their dollars, only because the number of participants in the program had to be lower. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, so those programs that did ended up having a lower amount of participants in it actually probably ended up returning some of the funding, or maybe not expending all of it. But most of the programs did go ahead and have a summer program. Was there another question on the public service?
I guess it piggybacks to going on this year. It would seem that if they go virtual, that their expense sheet would change.
Not necessarily. If they go virtual, maybe they'll be able to have the same amount of participants doing it virtually. I'm assuming they would still have the same amount of staff. I guess it depends on what the programs are. And some of the agencies did present some of the different things that they kind of look forward to doing virtually.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there other questions on the public services? Are there questions on the economic development projects that were listed on the last page?
I have a question about the housing programs. Can Veronica or yourself talk about the homeowner rehousing program, rehabbing?
You mean our regular home program that you're referring to, Kathy?
It says under housing programs.
Okay, these, okay, so these were actually applicants who put in applications, and these are for CDBG. And so what Methodist Towers proposed was to do rental rehab. But what they were looking for us to pay for, just a second. They wanted us to pay for a sanitary system replacement, and they needed to replace six copper wastewater pipes that ran from the top to the bottom of the building. And so when we looked at that activity, we said that it probably fit more so into the home category. But they also submitted a home application for new elevators. And I guess we haven't gotten to the home portion of it, because they don't have all of their funding in place, and they are submitting for tax credits. And they said that if they got the tax credits, then they would not necessarily know if they would need our funding. So all of that stuff would be actually kind of up in the air, and that would probably be something, because the funding is not in place, that we would not probably fund that unless they could provide some other funding besides our funding, because actually, I believe what they were actually looking for is probably over a million dollars. And that's a lot of money. So we're still actually, excuse me, we're going to actually be reaching out to them to get more information on, you know, if there is some other funding, if, you know, the tax credits go through, because we're not sure if the tax credits will actually go through. So a lot of that stuff is kind of up in the air. But that Methodist Towers is actually listed on the Home Investment Partnership Sheet. The other program that came in was actually from GCAC. They are looking to do housing rehab, maybe purchase a property and then rehab the property. But then there were a whole lot of things that I believe they had not actually looked into. And so there wasn't enough information for us to put any fun, put any funding into that activity.
So you don't know how much money's coming in and how much money you'll be able to give out?
No, we based this actually on our last allocation, which was 3.1 million dollars. And then we have the reprogramming dollars. So we kind of estimated it. We're hoping to get our funding allocations within the next few weeks, because our ad needs to actually go into the newspaper by March 15th. And that's when actually all of the projects that we do propose to fund will be listed at that time. So all of these numbers are proposed, and that's why I actually have been not releasing any of the numbers, you know, just yet, until we have a better idea of, you know, what our funding amount may be.
After you, Kathy, if you want. I did have a question about the Berry Plastics. How much is the, that warehouse project gonna cost in total? Do you know?
Oh, um, let me, I believe it's, oh, I want to say eight million, but let me just double check.
We have Chris Gruner in the room, Deb, if you need.
Okay, all right. So the project is actually, thanks for that, $8.2 million. And they will, this is an expansion from where they are currently located at. They look to retain. I want to, for some reason, 182 is in my my thought process. Chris is on the line. Chris, did you, do you want to tell me how many jobs will we be retained from Berry Plastics? I know there will be 15 new jobs.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. Yep, so this is, currently their workforce hovers around 160. They're hoping to add a handful of jobs once they take possession. But, so this is obviously a major job retention and, and future job creation project. We did get an update just actually about a half hour ago to your memo I had sent out, because this is also on your agenda for approving a piece of the financing. The Phase Two is now complete, and DEP signed off on that work scope. So that's another step in the process for the project to move along. So we just got word of that. So, yeah, major investment that they're making in Little Italy there. And this is helping to anchor them in Erie further, and we really want to support their future growth, so.
And I just wanted to piggyback on what Chris said, having written a story. Actually, I did the interview about a year ago, and then it had to wait till a few months before it ran into Erie Reader, but But interviewing Bob, what's his last name, Chris?
Guthrie.
Bob Guthrie. These are good paying jobs. The, um, these are family sustaining wages. He talked about, um, people stay there for a long time and, um, they hire from the neighborhood. People can also walk to their jobs. So I've been enamored with this, uh, company ever since, well, ever since I attended a meeting of the Little Italy Business Association a couple of years ago. Berry Plastics had made its, um, facility open to bring in people from the neighborhood. And since I met Bob Guthrie and had a chance to talk to him, have a tour of the plant and, um, see what, what that plant is contributing specifically to one neighborhood's economy and to the Erie economy. So Chris, thank you for navigating this for, for the company.
Thank you, Liz. They, they're a tremendous community partner and you're right, they, they go out of their way to try to hire neighbors. And so it's, it's, it's really good for the, for that neighborhood specifically. So we're excited, we want to get this, keep this project moving along. It's taken a long time, but, um, you know, we're, uh, one step at a time here. So, but we, this support is vital.
And I would add one other thing. There's also an emphasis at that business on job training so that you can advance. And I don't know, I can't remember all the names of the different types of positions that they have there. But, you know, you, if you do the training, um, you know, you can move up. And these end up being very technical jobs in terms of quality control of the, um, the way the plastic is being used. Anyhow, I'm not doing a really great job of explaining it, but I saw it in action. And it was pretty impressive to see, you know, women in lab coats monitoring the, um, you know, the, what do you want to say, the, the fault rate if there was something wrong and, and checking to make sure that everything was being done right. So maybe post pandemic, I would, I think he would be the type of person who would welcome having, um, some council people come and take a tour.
If you haven't toured yet, you should. It's fascinating to see the production there. And, you know, they've got a great training lab there. And of course, when the 90,000 square foot addition is complete, we have a ribbon cutting. That might be a good time to tour the whole facility, so.
And for those who are interested in preservation and reuse, part of this company is the Heisler Locomotive Company. So GE wasn't the only place building locomotives in Erie. Heisler Locomotives were built there. And these are, you know, huge thick walls there. So there's, there's been a reuse aspect to this too. Reuse for a long time because it had different names before Berry Plastics. It's been there, had a footprint in the neighborhood for a long time, but anyhow.
So if, if there are any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me because this is on your, will be on your, uh, agenda here for the meeting coming up too. There's multiple pieces in this capital stack and this is just one of them, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, are there any other questions on any of the CDBG, um, activities?
Deb, I have another question and, um, it's, it's about the demolition. Is that for commercial demolition and housing demolition or just for?
Kathy, we normally do, um, housing demolition. I think the only time that we would be allowed to do any commercial when it probably would be an emergency. We're actually looking into that to see if that is something that is actually eligible. But normally, uh, the demolition is for housing.
And, um, they don't know exactly how many they're going to do this year. There's a lot on the agenda for blighted properties and that.
Well, from what we learned from HUD, um, so we can't take any, um, we can't demolish anything if it's done by eminent domain. Has to be something that is an emergency. We can't just start, we can't just take properties anymore. Unless it's something blighted and something that is a danger to, um, the neighborhood or to individuals.
Who decides that, Deb?
Housing and urban development.
Police or fire have no say in it?
Well, if it's an emergency, if there's a fire or something like that, then we are allowed to demolish the property. But if it's just a property that is taken by eminent, eminent domain, then we, we cannot use funds to demolish the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How about like a house that, um, people are going in and out of? Even though it's been boarded up, it gets unboarded up. And, um, it's causing a problem in the neighborhood with vandalism and, you know, possible fire with people going in and out of it with drug activity or something like that. Could we, um, take a house down then?
Is it being taken by eminent domain? I think that's what the big question is Kathy. If it's taken by eminent domain, then our funds can't be used to demolish it.
Thank you for that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there, um, any questions on any of those community development block grant activities? Okay, do you want to move to your home investment partnership form? So if you look at your home investment partnership form, um, you'll see that there were, uh, way more requests than what we actually have funding for. And even the proposed allocation that is listed is over a million dollars. Our office normally receives about 800 and, last year we received actually 831,000 dollars, somewhere around there. This year, we, uh, the request is over two, well, actually $2 million. The projects that we are considering are over a million dollars. And so what we look to do if we are, if these projects meet the eligibility requirements to move forward and award funds to, what we look to do is look at some of our funding from prior years. And, um, and when I mean prior years, as far as like, we have money that may be in, uh, housing rehab for home or home buyer that is not being used right now. So what we look to do is go back to some of the prior years and take that funding and use it toward, uh, some of these activities that are actually listed. And so I guess what I should say is whenever we, whenever we do finalize the projects, it's not going to come down with how it looks here with these amounts here. Because we are taking money from prior years, we actually have to do grant based accounting. And so if we use prior years, we have to leave that money in that year's grant. So some of these items will come down where they may be in our fiscal year, 17th year, 18th year, 19th year or 20 year. It'll all depend on, um, you know, what we decide to fund and how much of the funding based on what our allocation will be this year. The first project that is listed up here for HANDS, HANDS is actually one of our community housing development, projects, which is a choo-to. And so with home funds, we have to allocate 15% for total activities. And HANDS is actually the only, um, organization that is a choo-to for the city of Erie. 10% of funding goes to administration. 5% goes to total operating. We don't have any requests for total operating. If we did, that would be HANDS. They did not request any funding. This year, I don't know if you have questions on it. HANDS actually proposed, uh, new construction on that description sheet. It talks about what they are actually looking, uh, to do. They have some buildings that they have up in the Goodrich, um, Goodrich and, what's the other one? Goodrich neighborhood, that they had housing actually for veterans. And so they're looking to expand that area and do some, uh, new construction, new affordable one bedroom apartments that would be on West 26th Street for, uh, individuals or people who are low income or at risk or veterans and veterans families. There was also Methodist Towers that I mentioned to you, who, actually I have something that's, it's, there's a mistake. Actually where it has the CDBG with the A54 and the 460, that should actually be up where Methodist Towers is. And that's where they requested the, the sanitary system replacement in the elevators. And as I mentioned before, we are looking, uh, to have a conversation with them again to see, you know, what their funding may look like, if they will be given those tax credits. I believe they won't know for sure until September. Our plan actually has to go in, in to HUD in May. So, uh, there's still a lot of questions up in the air. Richford Arms also, um, put an application in. They're looking to rehab, um, the property over at the Richford Arms. We are hoping to collaborate with them and hopefully be able to provide some funding with them. We're still in talks with them, um, on their activity. Are there, um, any questions on the home investment partnership program form?
Deb, this might be off the thing. Tulio Towers, who cooperates that or who gets funded there?
I'm not real sure who actually owns Tulio Towers.
I just wondered.
They've never come to us for, uh, requesting any funding. So I'm not sure.
Maybe you got the wrong name. It's right, it's right across the street from GCAC.
I believe that is, I think that is Tulio Towers. But I'm not sure who owns it.
Okay. Have to find that out. I, I deliver meals on wheels there occasionally and, uh, they should be asking for help. The place is pretty tattered.
I can look it up and see, um, you know, who owns it, if you'd like, and get back to you with that information.
Sure. Yeah.
Are there any other questions on the, um, home investment partnership program?
Yeah, could you email that out to me? I'm not sure I've received that.
Actually, okay, would you probably look at, you got the long sheet with the CDBG programs?
Yes.
Okay, look down at the bottom and then you should see something that says home next to it.
Can we find that one?
Yeah, it's on the next worksheet in Excel. So the first one says CDBG 2021. And then if you go to the right, there's a tab at the bottom, home, uh, 2021.
It's at the very bottom, Mike.
It's still not popping up on my particular screen.
I can resend it to you if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great. All systems are different. I can't get it on my screen. Thank you if you send it out.
Are there, um, any questions on the home investment partnership program? Alright, um, our last program is emergency solutions program. And actually, we did not change any of the numbers here only because we do not know what our funding is going to be on here. And funding is actually based on number of nights provided. And so all of the numbers that were, um, listed for our current plan that's going on are listed right here. And so, um, we normally wait until we get our actual allocation to, to, um, put the numbers in for this because there's a formula that we use. Are there any questions on emergency solutions grant? Are there any questions on anything that we went over here tonight?
I hope there's not a test, Deb, there's an awful lot.
Also on the, just, uh, also I want to mention on the CDBG as well, um, the numbers will, uh, for different projects will not all come down for our fiscal year 2021 plan. It will also list, um, activities that may be in our fiscal 19th year, 18th year, depending on where the reprogramming came from. And that is all I have.
And Deb, that there's another public hearing in March?
Okay, actually there's a, a public hearing, yes, March 1st. It'll be on Monday, uh, at 10 a.m. and 6 p.m. We'll send that information out to you. There won't be any, uh, listing of any of the proposed numbers for any of the activities for projects that submitted applications only because we do not know what our allocation is going to be. And we don't want to, um, put out numbers there that we may have to change. I mean, if it comes to, uh, March 15th and we do not have our numbers, we will have to list some of the proposed numbers that we have listed on these sheets that you have, um, that you were provided tonight. So on Monday, we don't look to give out any numbers to anybody because it is a needs here. And we know people will be wanting to make comments. There may be some comments that may come up where we may consider some of, you know, those comments. If there's some other activities, um, that might fit or be eligible for some of the funding for our fiscal year 2021.
Thank you. Anybody have any other comments? Mr. Mayor, are you there?
I appreciate everybody paying attention and listening to the presentation, yes.
Wonderful presentation. Davey, good.
Yeah, um, the, uh, where is the money going, Deb? I mean, I know it's, it seems like it's always going down or always, we're always trying to just make the most of money, which is all we can do. Any, any idea? I know you can't predict the future, you have no crystal ball. I'm just getting your thoughts, you know, given your experience with this program.
A lot of our funding is actually based on the census. And so not sure what our census, uh, information is looking like this year. So even based on, I guess, what we've been receiving in the prior years, depending on how they calculate the, the census, um, we're not sure what we're going to receive.
What is the latest with the census? I know, uh, Joe Renee, you've been all over it trying to get people to, to be involved in that. Any, any thoughts? What, what's the latest on that?
I haven't heard anything new on it.
Yeah, I mean, the deadline, you know, was shifted so many times. I think there was a lot of confusion. I don't know how our numbers are. We haven't gotten any updates yet.
Okay.
That was all supposed to, I'm sorry, that, that was all supposed to be delivered to Donald Trump by December 31st. But that never happened, uh, because there were too many discrepancies in the numbers that needed to be fixed. And so, um, I believe the last I heard was it was supposed to go to President Biden in March. So we may know something.
So they base these on last year's numbers then?
Yeah, these numbers, yeah, are actually what we received last year. And that's why it's all listed as proposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the good of the order, folks, uh, there won't be a Tuesday night study session. The resolutions that we were going to discuss were pulled. We will have the caucus Wednesday morning before the regular meeting and the finance, uh, meeting after the regular meeting. Commercial's done. Debbie, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. President, if I could.
Please, yes.
Yeah, make sure you check your email. There's a proposal for, from the Erie County, uh, I mean, from the Erie Parking Authority that, uh, definitely needs to be taken a look at and needs to be discussed. Just for the good of the order, thank you.
Okay, well, we could do that at the finance meeting too, right? I'm asking, I think.
Yes, Ed, um, I talked with the finance department today and, uh, Lisa Gummer-Saul, works with the parking authority with the tickets and that. And, um, they'll be able to, uh, give a presentation about, um, And, um, they'll be able to, uh, give a presentation about, um, questions that we may have about, uh, the way we've been doing, um, our ticketing. And then, uh, they're also going to, uh, present, uh, Florida information.
The parking authority?
No.
Oh, finance, alright, I got it. Yeah, I'm still, my mind was still on the parking authority. Like, anybody else, folks? I guess we can say goodnight then, huh? Goodnight, Kath.